It's 6 o'clock in the evening on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting of the Colrain Township Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Baker, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rajapal?
Here.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Good evening, Mr. Mills.
Good evening, Mr. Unger, Board of Trustees. The special meeting today was called. The board would like to discuss the CARES Act. And this evening, giving the staff presentation on the CARES Act is our Finance Director, Mr. Jeff McElravy. I will preface his comments by just saying that this CARES Act, understanding the CARES Act and how the money can be spent has been a challenge. And we've been dialed into the State of Ohio's Office of Business and Management's webinars and talking with our peers. And I think it's sort of a universal sentiment in local government, at least around here, that it's about as clear as mud. But we've tried to make some sense of it. And Mr. McElravy, do you want to take it from here?
Great. Good evening, Board.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi. So, the CARES funds that have come to the township fall in two buckets. One came directly from the state of Ohio, and the second comes to us through Hamilton County. We expect that, for the most part, those funds are all going to operate under the same rules in terms of eligibility and schedules. But there is a possibility that there may be a little bit of a variation between the two. So with that caveat, I thought we might talk a little bit, and just to frame up your discussion, about eligible uses for the funds, the timeline and deadlines that are associated with the funds, and the recommendations that are coming from staff as a result of our dialogue with each of the department directors and their staff. So, in terms of general eligibility, there are three criteria. The first is that the expense is necessary due to the public health emergency associated with COVID-19. The second, and this is a tricky one, is that the expense cannot be one that we accounted for in the prior budget. So if it's in our budget, we can't use the CARES funds for those purposes, with one notable exception that I will get to in a bit. And then the third is the eligibility period for these expenses. So the expense must have incurred between March 1st, which is when the state declared its public health emergency, and December 30th of this year. The expenses that we're going to, that are part of the staff recommendation are for expenses that are to date. They don't look at the time period from today going forward to the end of the year. So there are a set of permissible uses of funds that the state has set forth, and I'll highlight some of the ones that are most relevant to township operations. The first is for emergency medical response expenses. So these are the runs that our EMTs have had with their transporting suspected COVID cases. And also, the personal protective equipment that we've all heard so much about over the last six months is an eligible use of the funds. Other eligible uses include disinfection of public areas, public safety measures undertaken in response to the pandemic, expenses for quarantining individuals, expenses for providing paid sick and paid family and medical leave for impacted employees. And then, the really tricky one that we've been wrestling with is the one related to personnel. Our most valuable asset as a township are our people. They're also our most expensive category of cost. So, the payroll expenses for public safety employees who are, and this is the term of art that comes from the state, substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the public health emergency, those costs are allowable. There is another term that they use, and that is substantially different. So if we have an employee whose role is to be an EMT and make runs related to just the general response to emergency situations in the township, and their job has been diverted in a substantially, in a substantial way, such that they're spending the majority of their time responding to COVID-19, then the costs for that employee are eligible as well. In terms of equipment, the expenses that are associated with teleworking, so people being able to work remotely from home, are eligible expenses as part of the CARES Act. In terms of economic support, there is, eligible uses include small business assistance related to the closures of businesses, increased worker compensation costs, unemployment insurance costs, and also financial assistance to individuals and families directly impacted by a loss of income due to COVID-19. And there are a whole host of prohibited costs, but in the interest of time, I'm going to leave those aside for the question and answer, or the discussion portion of the meeting. In terms of schedule and the deadlines associated with the act, we have an interim report that is due to the state on October 6th. On October 15th, we have a deadline for all of the funds to be encumbered. So we're looking at five weeks to have all of the funds encumbered. Any funds that we don't have encumbered at that point have to be returned to the state for redistribution throughout the state. And then, the deadline for closing out the grant is December 30th. And of course, in 2021, all of these expenses will be subject to a single audit from the federal government. So, the, what has come out of the work at the staff level in terms of recommendations for the best use of these funds, really fall into three buckets. The first is personnel, almost exclusively for police and for fire. The second is for personal protective equipment that police and fire have used in response to the public health emergency. And then finally, is several capital items that will allow staff to better respond going forward to the pandemic in a way, or to provide service in a way that is safe for township employees. So, the totals on those costs are $1,250,870. And I'm happy to break that out for you in terms of how much for each department, if you would like. Those of you who have done the quick math on the resolution that is in your board packet, the work that we have done at a staff level is for 1.2 million, which is the full amount that we expect to receive from the state and also from Hamilton County. The resolution that is before, that is on your board packet for consideration tonight is for a little over $900,000. And the reason that is, is because the state is breaking its allocation to the township, to everybody but for our purposes, the township, into two buckets. So we have received the first bucket, the first 300 of the 600,000 that we expect from the county. And we will be back to you with another appropriations ordinance as soon as those funds are made available from the county. The other thing that I think I can, that I should add is that there's some great news coming out of Columbus related to Senate Bill 357, which is the state's appropriation of the balance of the funds that they have available from the federal government as part of the CARES Act. And the estimate, the Senate has passed the bill, it needs to go to the House. And the estimate that we have for what that would mean for the township is an additional $2.1 million. And it also would give us a little more time on our schedule in terms of getting funds encumbered. But as I mentioned, the House still needs to act, and it still needs to work its way through the rest of the state process, and then would actually need to be dispersed. So there's, there's a lag there, even if the House does act, as we expect they will in approve the, in approve the dispersment. So with that, if there's questions from the board, or if not?
Thank you. Thank you for that report. That's a full report. Let me turn to 357 for a second. When I last spoke to a couple of people in the state legislature, they indicated that there was an attempt to kind of broaden the usage of that, of the funds, so that there'd be more categories permitted. Is that, is that still where we're at, or we just don't know right now?
It's unclear. I can tell you that I spoke with Senator Blessing last week, and he indicated to me that he believed that it would be easier to use the funds, and that as of the time that I spoke with him, he said that 25% of the funds could be allocated directly to police and fire. So that would mean in a $2.1 million allocation, we could, 500,000 approximately, we could put straight into police and fire. The other 75%, we're still waiting to see how everything shakes out.
Okay. And this is just for this, it was not even fiscal year, but this calendar year, it appears, I know that people don't want to hear this, it appears that this may be a longer-term situation. So, I guess, is it advisable to allocate it now, or do we save some for a rainy day, or they'll take it back if we don't allocate it? Okay.
Yep. They take it.
It's a third of those options. Any funds that we do not have encumbered by October 15th and expended by December 30th, return to the state.
So my concern would be in 2021, if this were to drag on, the state wouldn't, wouldn't, the federal government, we already had an election, so the federal government wouldn't be as interested in maybe priming the pump with that additional money, and that would be an expense that we would need to incur. So, and I mean, you've done a great job of keeping your eye on the ball long-term, but I just want to bring that up as a concern, that in 2021, this doesn't seem like it's going away, and I think there'll be additional costs that we need to keep an eye out. But you guys, like I said, have been on top of that, but I just wanted to express that. But thank you for putting that together.
Jeff, following of the Matt, I think the people concerned is if you, you know, no, I won't say if, we appropriated the money by December, okay? So it'll go to the accountant general, you know, submit to the state, you know, what we're going to provide. I think, if I understand it correct, Matt, once you appropriate it, the money has to be spent, correct? Or not necessarily be spent by December 30th?
So the schedule that the state has set forth for us is that we need to have all of the funds encumbered by October 15th, meaning that there needs to be a signed purchase order imposed for us to contract for a particular service or good. And then that money actually has to be spent by December 30th.
December 30th, okay.
Now, this new Senate bill extended the date to encumber the funds until November 20th.
Correct.
Those are for the new funds. So, but still, they have to be spent by December 30th.
Correct.
And then there's going to have to be an audit. It's going to happen by February. So unless the legislature, some, you know, changes and extends these deadlines, the money's got to be spent.
So it's not like some other service we desperately need for the township, you know, we can pay it, it's not accountable if we prepay?
Yes. So there's a couple of questions there. We are not permitted to prepay things for next year, so it has to be this year. That's one of the rules.
Service has to be done?
Yes. And the other, the other important thing is there's, there's three, in procurement, there's three processes. There's appropriation, which hopefully we'll do tonight, which is the legislative authority to have, make those funds available for expenditure. That's appropriation. That's what we'll do hopefully tonight. Then there's encumbrance, which is when we open up a PO or a blanket with a, we open up a PO with a vendor, or open up a blanket. And then there's expenditure, which is the cutting of the check. And so hopefully, we do appropriation tonight, expenditure by the eight, or encumbrance by October 15th, and expenditure by December 30th.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Jeff, you talked about small business unemployment costs, you mean the township unemployment costs, that's what you, these are business struggling in our township to help them?
So there, there's two things at work there. The first is that, you know, one of the permitted uses for the CARES funding is to reimburse for our employees who have filed for unemployment. The way that that's actually being administered through the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services is that rather than us going back and using CARES funds to pay for that, they're actually just granting us a credit on, on the claims that, that were submitted that subsequently were denied. Now, for the funds that we have expended in paying for those unemployment benefits, that is an eligible use of the funds, should the board decide to do that. The second part of your, actually, it's the first part of your question, had to do with support for businesses. And that is an eligible use. It would set up a situation where that business would be a subrecipient of the township, and the actions that it takes in terms of how it manages the funds and reports those funds would be something that would be beyond our control, but it would still be something for which we would be responsible. So if we were to go down that path, we would need to be extraordinarily careful to make sure that the recipients of those funds are doing their documentation correctly, so that when the audit does come next year, that we don't end up being cited for actions that were beyond our control.
That's good. So, how, we had announced any business, how are you going to let the message go to the business people really affecting? There aren't a lot of business that are really affecting, they're struggling.
There are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, they're struggling just to survive. So how, go ahead.
Yes. And, and the federal response through the CARES Act to that situation has been through the Payroll Protection Program. And Hamilton County is also providing support for businesses through its allocation of the CARES Act.
About $7 million worth.
Right. So Jeff, you also mentioned about the employee, township employee, right? The Family Medical Leave Act due to the COVID-19, you know, so we help them if they need?
It's, so one of the eligible uses of the grant funds is if, for example, an employee needed to take time that qualified under the Family and Medical Leave Act as a result of a child or a spouse needing to be home because they had been exposed or had actually gotten sick, and they needed to be home to provide that care, then the township's cost of paying that employee's salary, to the extent that it's eligible, is an eligible expense for us to claim under the CARES Act.
So we would pay, we'd use that money to pay the sick leave, basically?
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
The, hi Jeff.
Hi.
So, these are kind of detailed, and you might not know the answer to that, but it's just some examples. So we've had police officers that have worked details, such as at North Gate Mall or wherever, and such as the mall was shut down. How would this affect that police officer when she was, all of a sudden, lost that stream of income, but it never really flowed through the township? So if she wanted to apply for it, it would be through the employer to Bonnie then, or no?
I agree with Jeff.
No?
Sure. So, our interpretation of the guidance, and to Jeff's point, in some cases, it's clear as mud. But, but our interpretation of the guidance is that we aren't able to replace revenue, or we aren't able to replace...
Revenue from the mall, let's say?
Correct. With the, with the CARES funds. If the employee didn't work, then in that case, that's, that's just a difficult situation.
Okay. So, there's some grants that we might have gotten every year, and I'm more thinking towards the bigger grant for Megaland. And if that was lost because the state funding dried up, but we had already been promised it, and I don't know what the status of that is right now, I guess you don't either.
I've got an update for you, if you'd like.
Okay. So if that money was lost due to massive slashing of the budget by the state, is there a way we can, you're shaking your head, no?
No. So the revenue replacement thing is a pretty hard and fast rule, and it's, you can't, can't replace it. But as an update, in my conversation with Mr. Blessing, Senator Blessing last week, he did say that he continues to push for a state capital bill, and he has not lost hope, and in fact, remains optimistic that a state capital bill will be adopted, you know, enacted this year.
So, back to up the street at the mall, we had, I remember, we laid off two employees that were working, that little substation up there? Is that our two laid-off employees that we had?
Yeah, I think those are the only folks that stopped working, but they were part-time. And so, so the way that we envision encumbering the money, once it's appropriated tonight, is keeping in mind that personnel's jobs had to be either substantially dedicated or substantially different. In the police department, the police department, for a time, went on an alternative schedule, and the goal of the alternative schedule was to take one-half of our patrol officers, and their job is to not get COVID. Stay home, don't get COVID, stay healthy, so that if Team A, who's on the street right now, gets sick, then we've got replacements. So we'd never be in a situation where we didn't have police officers to keep the township safe. That is substantially different from their typical assignment. And so, we believe that all of the, all of the salary costs that are associated with those folks that were on the alternative schedule are eligible for CARES. So in total, to the police department, you're looking at about $700,000 into the police fund, or paying for about $700,000 of personnel cost out of the CARES fund that should have, that would have gone out of the, the police fund. In the fire department, the way that we ended up calculating, we believe that about 5%, based on the data that we have, about 5% of our runs have been related to COVID, either suspected cases or whatever. So we multiplied the total salary costs of the EMTs, the fire department, by .05, or 5%, and that's where we came up with, for that, for a certain period of time, and that's where we came up with about 400, $300,000 in, in fire costs, and then there are additional capital costs. So that gets us to about $1.2 million.
Okay. And then anything else would have been small little line item things, like the day we hosted the COVID drive-through, whoever organized that, there's, you've got time in that?
We could do that, yep. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that was a bunch of people for a whole day.
Yeah.
And our daily salary cost is, there's a fixed number to that, and it's probably a lot, so.
Yes. So those are the types of uses, because that would be substantially dedicated, those individuals would be substantially dedicated to the COVID response.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the little bit of scratching I did here. Okay.
I have a couple of follow-ups to the questions that you guys had, if I could. So Mr. Mills said the police department salaries that were substantially different to the amount of 700,000, that sounds like a broad interpretation, and I'm fine with that, but what if they come back and say no?
We, we feel very confident that their, that those personnel's jobs were substantially different, as defined by the act.
Okay.
And, and it's real important to notice, to note here that this isn't money, this isn't $700,000 that's going to police officers, that they, you know, in addition to their salaries, that's not the situation.
Right. It's just going to go back to the...
Offsets the cost. And the real important thing here, the way our prioritization internally has been, look at your levy-funded operations, your police and your fire. These are the ones that we go to the residents and say, do you want this level of service? This is how much it costs. And every five years or 10 years, we have to go back and ask for more, like we're doing in the fire department. So if we can push those levies out, that's critical. And so police, you know, looking at the long-term forecast that's published in the budget, you know, they're going to be coming due here soon, and if we can push the police levy out another year, that's a win. And, and that's what we're trying very hard to do.
And I absolutely agree with that. I just want to know what the, you know, if this is, if other people are doing it, kind of thing?
Yes. And we have, Mr. Weckbach and I are on a call once a week with our counterparts from the other townships in Hamilton County, and the first, first topic of conversation every week is, okay, what have we heard this week? And how did it change from last week? And what are you guys going to do now? And so, we feel confident that we're not going to be in this boat alone. We've all sort of collectively felt comfortable with this.
Okay. Awesome. Fantastic. Last follow-up is for Jeff. So you talked about CARES money to businesses, and I know that Mr. Rajapal had some discussions, and I assume that that's in the Senate Bill 357, the additional 2.1 million estimated, that's where that falls. My question is, does that also fall with that 2.1 million? I think a big need too is, would that fall into providing support some, for non-government, nonprofit groups that are going to do like food drives and things like that? Or is it just strictly, because I, you know, the businesses I get, they're struggling, there's a lot of PPP that went to businesses. I don't know that nonprofits got that same slice of the pie on that, and I know that we have people that are hurting for, to pay their bills and just to get food on the table.
Sure. So the, the guidance that we have to date comes from what was in House Bill 481. And what comes out of the process, once the House and the Senate work out what Senate Bill 357 is ultimately going to look like, may result in guidance that is different from what we have received to date. The providing support for nonprofit organizations that have expended funds in response to the public health emergency could be eligible.
Okay.
The challenge that we face there is the same one that we were talking about with private business, in terms of them becoming a subrecipient of the township, and the, the risk that goes along with how they administer and document any funds that we may decide to provide to them.
Okay.
Mr. Waller, I will mention one more thing. On the topic of nonprofit support and assistance, Hamilton County, in the next week or two, will be releasing additional CARES funding for nonprofits only.
Okay.
That's coming also.
Great. Great. I appreciate it, Dan.
And that doesn't flow through a township, that's just?
Hamilton County.
Right.
Yep. And then they, and then they assume that, what happens then is that they're assuming the risk of the subrecipient being compliant, because if their subrecipient does something that's not in accordance with the CARES Act, then Hamilton County is actually, is the accountable party there.
You know, I'm just looking a little ahead to, you know, well, my favorite, obviously, my favorite holiday is Thanksgiving, you could probably tell that by looking at me. Football in Turkey, I get that. But these family holidays that are coming up, I think are going to be real rough for people, and that's Thanksgiving and Christmas, and I, you know, I think that, I think the township can play some kind of role in helping, whatever we can do. It'd be great.
Yes. And as an update to a program that you suggested to me to look into, the USDA Food Box Program, that will be coming to Colrain Township on October 20-something, we'll get, we'll get, once that date firms up, we will be announcing that, but I just wanted to share with you that we are...
We found a loading dock.
No. We're gonna, we're gonna, Colrain Township style, we're gonna make do with what we have, and we've got a forklift, and, and we're gonna unload the trucks with the forklift, and then get the box distribution set up, so.
Oh, that's fantastic. And we'll talk about that in the, the regular meeting, maybe, that'd be great. Thank you for working that out.
Yep.
And the expenses from that day of pulling all of our employees off to do that, that might be something that...
That makes sense, yep.
That's another day's worth of pay, of not just salary expense, but benefit expense also. If you take the, the cost per year of an employee and divide it by 250, or whatever the number is, that would be the, the way to figure that number.
And that's, and that's a federal program through the Department of Agriculture, and President Trump, and Senator Portman's a big sponsor.
And not something we would typically do, but we're doing it in this case.
Absolutely.
So, so Jeff, you've mentioned police and fire as being the two things. I imagine we've had expenses that have changed, either for better or worse, in other departments, such as zoning, or, or legal expenses. Have we incurred additional legal expenses because of everything that's gone on the last six months, or the amount of time it takes Larry to look through stuff? And, I mean, is that, that's an open-ended question for you to consider? I don't, I don't know if we incurred any additional expenses.
Well, I, I, before I lose the thought, I didn't like that Dan's come up with, because the other department, you mentioned about that department, they deserve like Public Works, Park District, and they play very integral part, the COVID-19, I go to Park, Heritage Park, every day walk. It's more people walking, you know, doing exercise, and these guys, the work people, Public Works, doing amazing job, keeping the place, fantastic. And more, for our residents, more invitation, like come and, away from, exercise, go for a walk, get away from home, you know? And how can we help those departments, you know, Public Works? That's very critical.
Sure.
I like that idea, Dan.
Thank you.
I like that idea, Dan.
It's the first time for everything, Raj. You like one of my ideas, did you hear that at home?
Yeah, I know, but, you know, I'm saying, you know, they.
The other departments have expenses too and I'm sure you're thinking about that.
They work so hard in keep our township safe in other way.
Yes, they do a fantastic job.
Yeah, yeah, they do. Also, when you're talking about the community, how also we can help directly the community, the community someone's struggling, the community under the lower income level, how can we help? People, senior citizens, they also, you know, need help from the COVID-19.
Sure. So one concrete example of the work that's underway to work with our senior population is what public services or in our community center team is doing with the Council on Aging, where they have had to flipped, flipped the business model where they were having folks in for meals and now are distributing those meals out into the community to make sure that folks are still getting fed.
So, and then Larry was about to say something about if we've had any change in legal cost.
I was going to say, yes, there definitely have been legal expenses associated. This meeting, for example, I mean, but I've done, there were, the CARES Act is pretty comprehensive legislation and they changed the Family Medical Leave Act, I've had to give opinions on a number of issues that have to do with the CARES Act and COVID-19.
Summarize those and put them in a format where we could add that, if you haven't done it already, I don't know, because, you know, we don't.
Well, we've had continuing discussions about it.
Okay. So yeah, all those different things could be rolled up into this.
Yeah, the really difficult thing with, with an expense being eligible under the CARES Act is that it can't be something that was already part of our budget. If it's a, if it's a new expense that is in response to the public health emergency, then that is an eligible use. If it is something that was already in the budget, then that's, that's a much tougher thing.
Right, but I don't think we budgeted for Larry to be sitting here tonight, much less than anything else he's done.
Unless what has been budgeted is substantially dedicated or substantially different, that's the key, right?
Yes.
Yep. And this will, so this will evolve as we get more clarity on the new allocation from Senate Bill 357, the 2.1 million. And I also want to point out that this is going to be, this is going to be an incredible logistical feat, because, consider if you will, that since May, March 1st, we have had many paycheck, or pay periods. And for each of those pay periods, each individual that is substantially dedicated to the COVID fight, that's going to have to be manually transitioned from the police fund to the fire fund. So every individual, for every pay period, that's going to have to be transitioned in UAN, which is a huge amount of work. And so we're trying to figure out how to do that in a very short period of time. So once we get direction from you guys on which way you want to go, then we will be off to the races and get that done.
And that has to be an established dedicated fund for just the CARES money?
Yeah. So instead of having a paycheck draw from the police fund, we have to go back and change each paycheck to draw from the CARES Act Fund One or CARES Act Fund Two, because we have two of those.
And if it's like an equipment purchase, it's not going to, it's going to go on a different ledger account, it'll go?
Has to come from the CARES Act Fund, yep.
Okay. All right.
Also, Jeff mentioned, I was talking to Sims Township, how do they spend the money? They also spend the money on the website publications, you know, development, reference to coronavirus and deter more community education type of things, something that we might do?
Yep, potentially. Our website, we just did a big update a year or two ago and so we haven't incurred any additional new costs. Maybe they're updating their website now and they find that it's opportunistic to use COVID funds for that, you know? Or maybe COVID was the driving factor behind their update. One of the capital costs, for example, that we're looking at is a way to transition the planning and zoning department, as you guys mentioned, resources too, into a fully automated online records management system, which would allow for our code enforcement officers to be 100% out in the field. They could do everything that they need to do out in the field, that's, that's the goal. And so that's one of the capital expenses that we're trying to.
Trying to put.
Trying to recommend, I'm sorry, I just trailed off there, didn't I? Finished the thought in my head.
If we, if keeping our code enforcement people out in the field and keeping them from collecting together in the office.
That's the goal.
Can that, is that part of a CARES Act expense? So we develop a new protocol so that we, we're just keeping people away from each other?
That's exactly right. And giving them the tools to do that safely. I think that an ancillary benefit will be better code enforcement operations also.
So, great, I really appreciate your time. Does any of the other trustees have any follow-up questions or?
I think, you know, great planning is very important, the money well spent, it's very critical.
I just got a text that the volume is not coming through on Waycross.
We're looking into it, it's only on the web version, it's fine on the channels and the broadcast though. I've got someone looking into that actually.
Okay, so right now they're looking into that, it's only on the web?
Yes.
Web, but it's not on the?
Televised.
Televised version, okay.
On spectrum or phi-optics.
Sorry, sorry Raj, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, no, no.
One of the questions that'll come up later in the, in the public part of the meeting is regarding money received under the CARES Act, what expenses is the township being reimbursed for, it should be our, what expenses is the township being reimbursed for specifically? And so the answer to that'll come out later, we don't have that answer because we haven't been reimbursed.
That's correct.
Yeah, that answers down the road after we get the check. Is that somewhat accurate?
We've got the check and we can be very clear that it's going to go, it'll go into one of three buckets, personnel, PPE, or capital.
That'll be a question later in the meeting from a resident who's asked that question.
Yep.
So I don't have anything else, Raj or Matt?
Just, I appreciate, it's been a long time since I was at city council, since I heard buckets, which we deal a whole lot with the buckets at appropriations and city councils and it just warmed my heart to go back with buckets. Which makes it very easy, I think, for people to understand watching at home how these work. They're imaginary buckets, the money is going to be switched from bucket to bucket. But thank you so much, I think that's, might be the first presentation that you've given while I'm on the board, so thank you. I think it's, usually it's a bunch of questions I have, but.
Usually we keep them locked in his office.
Thank you so much.
Grinding out work.
I think overall, your, our administration chief, police chief, fire chief, everybody, this is, this has been very critical time, you know, COVID-19 has started, our township did a greatest job in controlling this virus in our township and helping people. And we did pioneer a lot of stuff here during the virus time, but we continue to do that. And I thank you for you guys.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, so, thank you Jeff. So moving on with the meeting, we would do what then, recess till seven or?
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, move to adjourn and then start back up at seven.
I will move to adjourn.
I will second it, it's been motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? I opened that as a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees.
A special meeting, this meeting was a special meeting.
Okay, so, so I would comment that we are adjourning the special component of the meeting and we will resume the, we will open up a new regular meeting at the advertised time, which is seven o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded, was there any other discussion?
None.
Hearing none, Mr. Baker, please call for a vote. Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Please stay tuned, we will be back right around seven o'clock.